Call meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School meeting of Wednesday, January 16th, 2019 into session. First item on the agenda is action on the minutes of our open meeting of December 19th, 2018. Paul?
I approve the minutes for your open meeting of December 19th.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan. Do I have any comments or changes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes. Opposed and abstained. Okay, one abstention. How many we, how many were? Six in favor. Okay. The next item on the agenda is educational policy approval of the DECA overnight trip to Boston and approval of the music department overnight trip to Allstate in Boston as well. So, Paul?
No reason not to bundle these two together. These are annual events and we've supported them for as long as I've been around, so I move that we accept the overnight field trip application for both the DECA trip and the Boston music trip.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor. That's approved. You can slide. Next, we have new business, the athletic update.
Yeah, there you go. Absolutely. So, last we met, we met earlier in the fall, so I have a little bit of rundown for the end of the fall and beginning of winter since we're about halfway through. So, you know, with our fall season complete and the opportunity, we had a bunch of teams that had an opportunity to compete in tournament and for the norm for Algonquin athletics, our athletics continue to represent the school, the communities, and the outstanding performances on the field by exhibiting sportsmanship through excellence in the classroom. So, just a quick rundown of the athletic department and where we kind of stand with our current fields of 58 teams. We have featuring 31 varsity sports and we have 70 coaches on staff plus volunteers working with over 900 student athletes, which is comprised as close to 70% of our student body. So, it's a great number. At the end of the fantastic fall season, we had a bunch of teams participate in tournament. We have boys and girls cross-country qualified for districts and states. We have boys' cross-country team participate in states for the first time since 1997, which is a great accomplishment. Other teams that qualify for tournaments were boys' and girls' soccer, volleyball, field hockey, and cheering. Game day cheering finished fifth in the states and performance qualified for nationals for the first time in school history. So, they will be competing in Atlanta, Georgia in April. So, it's a great accomplishment for the cheering team, the performance team. We had 25 student athletes named mid-watch league all-stars. We had two league MVPs, golf and field hockey. We had one Division One sectional champions, which was boys' golf, which finished seventh in the state. So, great turnout for the fall tournament participation. This year, which was a little bit different, we brought back National Signing Day, which was on Wednesday, November 14th, which recognizes our eight student athletes. We had eight of them that signed a national letter of intent to play at Division One and Two Collegiate Athletics, which I think is great and a great representation of Algonquin athletics having the opportunity to play at the next level. We're also, as a goal of mine in regards to getting athletics out into the community throughout the fall, we, it's been about seven years since athletics last presented in Northborough and Southborough senior with complimentary sport passes to the athletic events, which we're excited about bringing this back this year. Athletic council marched in the Southborough Heritage Day Parade and 20 of our student athletes were excited to represent ARHS within our community. The goal in 2019 is to march both in Applefest and in the Heritage Day Parade in Southborough. And this was the first year that we actually participated in the parades through Athletic Council. Athletic Council and the student athletes also read at Peaslee Elementary School on Wednesday, November 14th. And again, the Athletic Council will continue to be an active and empowering student athletes to feel invested in the athletic department and to enhance school spirit, sportsmanship, and to be active in the community service. Best buddies held their annual friendship walk in Bolton. We got the invite through Neshova Regional High School. None of the, of our teams have participated before, so I extended it out to our coaches. And I gotta give a great, you know, a thank you to Algonquin cheerleaders who came out and participated in that and supported the best buddy walk and the friendship walk. They had a great time. They were face painting and they were walking around and representing Algonquin in their gear. It was great. It was, it was, there was one, one team that represented our school. It was cheerleaders. It was great. Our impact testing is out and implemented since 2016 and 17 as a resource for our families, student athletes, and their primary care physicians to use as concussion testing. So, that is up and going and has been released again this year, starting in the fall. Our fall participation numbers, we had over 500 student athletes participate in fall athletics. Slowed down compared to 2017 and 18, however, we saw an increase in the numbers of boys and girls in cross-country, volleyball, cheering, and even numbers with girls and boys soccer. Something that the athletics, that I'd love to continue doing, I think we've had great turnout and a lot of student athletes to represent Algonquin, is our T.O.C. of the Month. And we've had 17 T.O.C. of the Month award recipients between September and December. This award continues to recognize outstanding student athletes for the demonstration of leadership, teamwork, sportsmanship, and excellence on and off the field of play. Our student ambassador program, we have three student ambassadors and we have attended two conferences so far. We've been to the leadership conference at Gillette Stadium and we are looking to go to Girls and Women in Sports Day, which is going to be held on in February 1st in Boston. Our unified program, which was stated in the fall, great accomplishment, was one out of 10 schools that was nationally ranked in regards to a national banner school. And that's one out of 10 in Massachusetts and one out of 147 in all nationally. And this is a dedication to the recognition of our student athletes to their role and inclusion in sports. Our captain's breakfast was, was a success. We held it in the fall with our fall team captains and we're going to hold it again in February with our winter team captains. And this is when we have our captains come out and we answer the question, what is my role and why was I voted team captain? We get a lot of interaction about that, a lot of group work, and we get a lot of feedback and talk, which always resolves around leadership. And now into our winter season, which we've started back on November 31st, I believe it was, it was that Monday after Thanksgiving, we are, we're in a good spot where our participation is up by 5%. We had over 400 athletes participating and saw an increase in boys' and girls' basketball, co-ed swimming, boys' and girls' track, gymnastics, and skiing. We added a boys' freshman hockey team this year, which was great, all great news where we started off with the winter. We have, joining to our coaching staff, we have new coaches that are on staff and the reason why I want to talk to this is because they have a strong tie to the Algonquin community. We have new coaches with gymnastics in regards to ARH graduates and that are involved with the gymnastics team, the boys' basketball team, and the girls' basketball team, all either a graduate or a teacher within the building, which I think is, that builds the community and builds the relationships with our student athletes. Our winter season results, and we're about, you know, halfway through at that midpoint so far, our boys' and girls' basketball teams were invited to play at the garden, TD Garden, in the Good Sports Invitational on January 6th. Our hockey, boys' hockey team won the Burrows Cup and the Daily News Tournament for the first time in school history and, which is certainly exciting. Gymnastics and boys' and girls' swim and dive are undefeated right now. They're eight and oh, and 10 and oh, eight and oh in our league. Girls' hockey's off to seven and two start with big games. Skiing and girl, skiing and girls' and boys' had top finishers and the teen, girls' team won Week Two Giant Slalom. Boys' and girls' track are three and one, earning personal and school records throughout. And wrestling's had wins against Quab and Marlboro, competing in the Lowell Invitational and hosted quads versus Framingham. And I don't know if you've ever had a chance to go and see one of these wrestling quads, but they're, they're pretty fun and it's, it's pretty entertaining. It's great. The kids work extremely hard, all the sports, they work extremely hard. And cheer, they are at our game day every Friday, performing, not necessarily a set schedule throughout the year, but they are there to cheer on our boys' and girls' basketball teams throughout for game day. Away room, we had added our, maintaining our equipment and we added four new treadmills at the beginning of this year with the goal of adding two new stationary bikes, two new Grumdet bikes, and two new ellipticals going into 2019. Like to say thank you to the booster club, I mentioned the booster club for the continued support and dedication for our student athletes. Boosters and athletics will continue to work together to support our teams and invest in future upgrades for our fields and facilities. All the individual teams and team representatives did an amazing job for fall, helping with concessions, acting as ticket takers, organizing fundraisers, and providing tremendous overall support for our student athletes. Our current project that athletics are working on is in the spring, we're looking to upgrade the scoreboard facings for the softball field and the JV football field and upgrading the battery system. I would like to say a special thanks to all that make this possible, Central Office, Superintendent Johnson, Principal Walsh, the admin team at ARHS, Facilities Department for their hard work in helping prepare facilities for practices and games, John Driscoll, our athletic trainer, our superb coaching staff, Susan Bembert, and our truly outstanding student athletes. Just to give you ahead, going into spring, we have our spring sports night for player and parents on Monday, March 4th. Our first day of spring sports is Monday, March 18th, and the registration for spring sports opens up February 15th and will run through March 12th. And so, that's as we prepare to open up the spring season. Please continue to show your support for the five young men and women by attending both the home and away games this winter season. So, thank you and I will hopefully see all of you at the games.
Thank you. Paul?
So, I hadn't, I thought it was terrific. The sports program is always, it seems like it's getting better. What is, am I misreading these impact test results numbers? I mean, is the testing just completely falling out of favor? We only had three new tests taken this year, only 22 last year, 250 almost the year before. I mean, we have a thousand athletes. I mean, it's, what's happening there?
I think the year it was implemented was 2016-17, so it gets right out of the date, right out of the gate. I think over the years, Algonquin has done a fantastic job on focusing their awareness with concussion and preventing concussion training. I think that in conversations with the, with the nurses and the health department, that the number of concussions of where we're at this year has been down compared to what it was last year.
How do you know? They don't take the test?
And so, just documented concussions, documented concussions, just to compare where we were at this year, who's documented to where we were last year. And I think the overall, like I said, the overall, and spring is not included yet, so they have not taken the test, so we're waiting to see if anyone is.
The last year was comprehensive. I mean, went from 236 kids taking the test to 22. Is it, is it discredited? Is it not a valid test? I mean, I always thought this was something that we should be encouraging. It doesn't seem like we, I suspect we could put a little more weight behind it and get a few more kids to take it if it's, if it's a good test to be taken.
Yep.
It's free for them, right?
Yep.
It gives, it creates, this is the one that creates the baseline so that we can, I don't, I mean, I don't have any kids in the program anymore, but do we have?
So, I know that like when it first came out, I gave them my degree to do it, and I think that I had eligibility. I don't know how many years it's good for.
One year.
It's just good for one year, yeah. So, and I don't, you know, I don't know if it's something that you can have the papers available when you walk out of the sports night just to say or have. And I think it also depends on sometimes like the different sports, like that the kids are playing, you know?
Yeah, still, I mean, if there were 236 one year, then there should, and the test is all valid for a year. I mean, it strikes me that we ought to maybe have a couple hundred being taken the year after or something, but no, I mean, anyway, I just, yeah, a comment, I think that, yep, those numbers, I'm not thrilled with that at all. I mean, and, you know, for the, for the health of the kids and stuff, if there's something you could do to push that, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay, perfect.
Joe?
Thank you for your report. It's always great to have you here the second time this year, and I hope that we hear from you again in the spring, but it's great to hear the update. I also agree with Paul. I think with all the current talk and topics and studies done at BU on concussions and former athletes, I think it's very important to do it so whatever we can do to increase the number, because I was thinking, when I saw the numbers, as Paul did, when I saw the 236, I thought, well, maybe that takes for a couple of years, but if it's only good for a year, so if there's some way that we can establish it, because I think it would be for the betterment of the students and as they go into their careers. I'd like to just commend you on what the Athletic Council did by going into Peaslee School. I know the last Northborough School committee meeting or the one before, Dr. Jill Barnhart, principal of the Peaslee School, did mention that and how widely accepted it was and how the kids really loved it. So, thank you for going in and have the athletes do, athletes do it. I know the kids will always look up to them in that way. So, if you can continue doing that, going into Southborough, giving them the same equal opportunity, that would be great. All the stuff that you're mentioning is absolutely fantastic and you're like the biggest cheerleader, you know, for our athletic department. Have you or will you be planning to going into both middle schools to take the athletes before, you know, for the eighth graders as they come in? Is that something that's being planned or has it been done?
Yeah, it is absolutely planned. It's at the end of each year, we go into the middle schools and we talk about the opportunity for clubs and activities and athletics. And we talked about, we bring our coaching staff, we bring our students, we go over to the middle schools, we talk about the sports that are offered coming into the fall. We will also talk about the sports that are offered in the winter and the spring, but more or less it's like a kickoff for the sports that are coming up at the end of last year to get them ready and prepared for the fall and what is offered when they first come into the high school.
And I think even highlighting some of the leadership opportunities, like going to Gillette, you know, being part of the T.O.C. award, being on Athletic Council is also wonderful because you never know what students may go into sports management as they're in their next career. And my last question was, what about intermural? Do you have an intermural program set up for this, for those students that are not the athletes that they could, you know, the kids want to get together and play volleyball or something like that?
Currently, there's one intermural program that's being run through Northborough Recreation that is run here through basketball, which is on Sunday nights. It's offered through, it's offered for anybody who may not have the ability to participate in a winter sport, may not want to participate in a winter sport, but will want to play recreation. So, they have that option to play on Sunday nights through Northborough Recreation that takes place here for basketball. But as far as intermural sports, I just had a conversation with Northborough Rec looking to expand those opportunities going into the spring. We actually just had that conversation today about kind of expanding off of, of intermurals, different sports other than basketball.
Yeah, that would be good to do, I think. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Other comments?
Thank you, Mike. I agree, it's, it's awesome to have some of these things come back, the T.O.C. of the month and it's, it's, it's good to see the kids recognized and all the different leadership opportunities you're providing to captains. I mean, I played, you know, in high school and I was elected captain, but I didn't know what that meant. So, I think it's, it just, I showed up and led by example, I guess, but anyways, thank you for providing all those added, added programs for the students so that they really can become leaders of the teams, peer leaders. So, thanks.
I just want to add, it's hard to believe Mike's only been in this position since July. His in-depth knowledge and his enthusiasm is contagious. We did have an opportunity to meet for several hours over the holiday break and, Mike, I don't know if you want to speak to the handbook, the review of the handbook and the committee that you have formed to update what clearly needs to be updated after reviewing some of the contents and appreciating that that was put together probably in 1998, I think, at some point.
So, we're in the midst of, as you just made aware, we had a nice collaborative and informative meeting that took place prior to break or right after break. That brought up a lot of interesting points and it's a subject that we would like to touch on and prove and made me aware of and us aware of on, on safety and guide to athletics and stuff that we can just kind of, kind of break into a point where we can improve on now, stuff that we can take a look at in regards to data, get feedback from other surrounding schools and, and see what we can kind of fix right now, which has been addressed, some issues have been addressed, and more communication, more dialogue in regards to some of the topics that were brought up and has been, you can check that off in regards, and there's other conversations that took place with my mid-watch athletic directors last Friday to provide feedback of what it is like without, in different types of schools and communities. And now, we're in the midst of forming a committee to take, take a look at the guide to athletics that I believe that we can make stronger and update and looking to get input from not only parents, but coaches and athletes and administration, all kind of collaborating. And that, that committee's hoping to be formed relatively soon so we can take a look at all aspects that, that the guide to athletics touches on to make sure that we're up to date and current with not only how other schools operate, but with MIA rules and regulations. So, that's, that's in, that's, that's taking part right now and hopefully have that committee together relatively soon.
Joe?
In that guide to athletics, could you highlight the impact testing and even for some parents, even just a small blurb, but even give them maybe some websites that they could go to, to read about it? I would just like to, do like a pause, I want to be a cheerleader, I want to get more of those numbers up because I think it's very beneficial for our students.
Okay.
Leslie? Not to dwell on the impact testing, but when you are, because I am, you know, you're, well, pre-predator, this was such a big deal for a long time with a lot of parents, and so I too am concerned, how did this fall off the cliff? So, when you are getting together with your MIA folks and, or if you have access to data, it would be interesting, I think, to all of us to see how we are comparing versus other high school programs because, you know, if this is just a, if this is just something that is prevalent with, you know, all schools, then, you know, it's a societal problem, but if it's just us, then we should know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
So, I guess I will say, like, I think that maybe one reason, it is a piece of paper that your child takes home and there's a code on it. So, that's why I think that if you're at a meeting and you actually have the papers available there and not at the athletic office because they're not, you know what I mean? I think that there's a disconnect between the kid getting the paper and bringing it home. I think that if you had it and you handed it to somebody as they're walking out the door, chances are the numbers would go up because they have it right there.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Mike. That's great. Next, we have our world language department presentation.
A world member, our world language department chair and teammates, I guess, keeping with the sports.
Our cheerleaders.
Our cheerleaders.
Settle thing? All right. Good evening. Thank you all for letting us join you. To talk to you about the great things that we do here at Algonquin and within the world languages department. First, I wanted to start off with this picture. This is everyone in the department, all the French, Spanish, and Latin teachers, and while not everyone could make it here tonight, they all wanted to say hi to you. So, here we are. And on that note, I would like to introduce to you two of our new hires this year. We have Yacaida, does this work? No. Oh, it is? Oh, fantastic, okay. So, we have Yacaida Gonzalez. She recently graduated college and she was born and raised in Puerto Rico. And we also have Evan Greenwald here. Some of you may recognize him. He was a former Algonquin student here and he loved Spanish and became a teacher and loved Algonquin so much that he wanted to stay. So, that's success to me. And we're so happy to have them part of our team. They're doing a fantastic job. You can see here for the Spanish department, this is the list of teachers here and those are the course offerings that we have. Students have many courses that they have the opportunity to take all the way up to Level Five, and we have advanced placement with an overall score of four, and we're very proud of that. It's a lot of work that the students and the teachers are doing to prepare the kids to be successful. And hopefully next year, we're considering adding another elective in Spanish. It would be Spanish History Through Film, so just another great opportunity that our Spanish students have to take a variety of courses. We have been able to acquire a new set of books, Avan Semos, for our levels one, two, and three, and I can't tell you how exciting we, how excited we are as teachers and students to be able to use this. It has a plethora of resources. We have technology, videos, authentic audio activities, writing, speaking activities that we use with the kids in the classroom. And as educators, we understand how important it is to feel connected, for the students to feel connected and have meaningful experiences with what they're learning. And so, one of the challenges that we had faced with the old set, the Realidades, was it had vocabulary words that we were trying to teach the kids, such as cassette tapes, phone booths, and VHS tapes. So, it's a little challenging, you know, to try to teach them that stuff when they have never seen it themselves. Kind of, I'm kind of dating myself here. I know about that stuff, but they don't. So, we are very excited to have the new books throughout the curriculum so in that way the kids can enjoy the learning and, and really get connected with the material. Not only in Spanish, but throughout the department in Latin and French. We work hard to have the kids hone their speaking, listening, reading, and writing skills. And we have a variety of activities that we do within the classroom, but here on the left, you could see that our Level Four students, they did this activity in which they had a murder mystery and they learned about the preterite and imperfect, and that's basically, those tenses are used when you want to talk about an event in the past. They went and had a lot of fun with this. They were creative. They did something where, you know, Aunt Jemima was, was murdered by, you know, Betty Crocker or, you know, Colonel Sanders or, you know, all these different characters. But they presented the presentation in Spanish and in front of the class, so they utilized all those skills. And we also have another activity on the right with the Spanish artists. That's for Level Three. Students were learning about art and music, and so individually, they researched a Spanish artist and found a work of art, and then they had to give a presentation in the target language in front of the class. That was done individually, but the kids all wanted to get together as a whole group, project for everyone. This right here, La Catrina, is just a novel. What we've done in the curriculum, in addition to all these different activities, is we've incorporated novels for the honor students. It's a great accomplishment for them to have, after they've read a novel, to be able to say that they read a chapter book in the target language that they're learning. And so, we do this and we have several different novels, but this one in particular, it's, I just wanted to show you the great work that the kids are doing. They really get excited about it. This video is nine minutes long. We're not going to take the whole time to watch it, but I would like you to take a minute just to see some of the great work that they're doing. You can tell that they're invested in it and they're utilizing the language, and that's really what we want the kids to do. So, I'm going to show you just a quick video footage of it. I mean, I find that to be very impressive and it's exciting to see the kids really just run with the activities that we ask of them to do. This slide here is just a representation of what we've done this year. You know, Northborough and Southborough, it's a big school district. There are many schools, there are many students and teachers. And what we're really excited about is this year, we had some Spanish teachers at Algonquin get together with the two middle schools, Spanish teachers at the two middle schools, and we've collaborated with one another. The middle schools are also, they've acquired the Avan Semos textbooks, and so we got to talk about not only horizontal curriculum alignment, but vertical as well. And it's been nice. We, we had some great discussions about what do we, what skill sets do we want our students to know at the end of seventh, eighth grade and all throughout high school? And we're excited about this process. We're going to continue throughout the year and hopefully this will be a common practice that we do as a group throughout the three schools. And the French teachers have done this as well in the past couple of years and they still can, continue to communicate with one another. So, again, we're really excited about this. It only helps us to be better teachers and provide a better education for our students within the classroom. Okay, here is Latin. They're also going to be doing another project about something that I personally love, which is food. I mean, who doesn't love food, right? And so they're going to talk about Roman cuisine, and they're going to take a look and read Roman poetry about food. They're going to take a look at ancient recipes, and they're going to create foods, and then bring it into the classroom. They're going to eat it all and have a good party and have fun. But it's just another great, or another example of how the students utilize the material in fun, engaging ways, and they're learning, and they don't even really know it. These are the textbooks that we use, the Cambridge Latin Course, units two and three. This year, we've been able to acquire new textbooks. To the right, you'll see Latin of New Spain. It's a compilation of stories that's geared towards teaching in the Latin classroom. So the teachers are excited about that, and they're happy to be able to incorporate that into the curriculum. On the left, you'll see some Latin students. The club went into Boston this year. Last year, they went into the Museum of Fine Arts, in which they looked at Roman and Greek artifacts. And this year, they're going to have a trivia night at the senior, the Northborough Senior Center as well, which is a great way for them to establish connections between students and teachers and the community. We do such great work here at Algonquin, and it's nice for the community to see the students and how great they are and they can contribute in other ways, just other than being in the school. And to the right, we can't help but have so much fun. We all decided to get together and do as the Romans do and wear togas and get comfortable. And the students enjoyed seeing us in a different light as well. So the two teachers we have for French are Paula Bombron and Lauren Osipchak. These are the courses that we offer, levels one through four. And we have AP as well. The overall score is four, again, as in Spanish, and we're just really proud of the accomplishments of the students and the teachers. We've been able to acquire all new textbooks again, so those teachers are just as excited as we are about the new resources that we have. So we have Bien Dit for levels one, two, and three. And here are a couple examples of all the fun that they're having. To the right, you'll see some students, what they did during the National French Week this week, this year. They decided to choose a famous French person and dress up as them. So they had a costume contest. They also had a poster contest, and they had a party in which they brought in French cuisine. And to the left, you'll see there's a gentleman, Mr. Leboronec, who is a native of France. And he came in because his child was in the, in the class, and he talked to the students about what it's like to live in, in France, talked about the food and the culture, and they all had a really great time. This is a picture of all the clubs. We have French, Latin, and Spanish clubs. This is just a picture of the students that they met at a restaurant to enjoy Mexican food, and they learned about how to make Mexican masks, our clubs. And we also have the Spanish Honor Society. This is their induction ceremony. They do so many different activities, whether it's doing peer tutoring to help students that need extra help in the language. Last year, they went to the elementary schools and they helped with an art project in the program, and they read to students. And they're just, they do so much work outside of just, you know, helping out in the classroom or doing fun things in their, whatever language they're learning about. This is just some points, talking points I wanted to talk to you about. Last year with Hurricane Maria, there was a lot of devastation in Puerto Rico. And what we did as a whole department is we decided to work together, and we had students donate money willingly, okay, we didn't force them. We also contributed for, if we wanted, and we were able to raise $2,045. And we took that money and gave it to United and UNICEF. So I think it's a great way that we could show everyone how we not only work hard for just Algonquin, but for others as well, and, you know, hopefully we help some people that were less fortunate. We also attend MOFLA conferences every year, so at least two people, generally more, but at least two go to these conferences. And we can choose which kind of workshop we would like to see or attend, whether it's to work on proficiency-based activities, learn how to teach students to write better, speak better, what have you. But we really do appreciate that opportunity. It just helps us to better, to be better educators. The people that went this year, they came back with some new ideas that they learned about, and they shared them. And I actually use them in my classroom. So we're a team, we collaborate with one another, but those experiences for us, we value and appreciate. Down, we have the Foreign Language Week. We would like to bring that back. It's going to be March 3rd through the 9th. We just want to have all of our students appreciate the benefits of learning languages and how much fun they can have. We're going to have competitions in the classes, possibly show authentic movies, of course, have food, you know? So that's something that we're looking forward to. And lastly, I just want to talk about the educators in our department. We work really hard within the classroom to provide our students with the best educational experience that they can have. But they also work hard outside of that. We have advisors, we have class advisors, we have advisors of the linguistics club and different clubs. We have people helping out with the radio station. And I just wanted to take the time to recognize that and all the contributions that they have for the school to help make it such a great school. Thank you.
Leslie? Thank you for that great presentation and all the tech, all the things that are going on in the Language Department. It's, it's, it's very important. I noted we're reading a little novel, and I remember my days when I first went into college freshman year, taking a foreign language, and all of a sudden having to read a novel. I was like, oh, my gosh. So it's, it's not, not easy to begin to like read in that language. It's a whole novel, and I understand it. I have had enough time with English.
So it's quite an accomplishment, right? When you do it.
I'd like to commend you for everything that you're doing for the students, and I can see why we have some high scores on the AP test. I mean, one of the highest levels of Bloom's Taxonomy is application. And from your cuisine, drama, some of the screenplays that were done in Selman Pan Mall, I recognize that. I recognize that. And from the novels and even doing the trivia. I mean, if the students get to apply it, they're going to keep it, and it's real-life experiences that you're giving to them. So thank you very much, because I think that's why the AP scores are higher, and I can see why there's a lot of interest to take to foreign languages. I have one question about the textbook that you mentioned, and you mentioned the technology part. Is there some, the technology that they can use during the, in the classroom, is there any connection that they can use it at home? Are there any passwords or anything that if they want to continue or review, that they can do it at home at their leisure?
Absolutely. So they do. They have access to the textbooks and the resources, and they have items such as Home Tutors. So there's a little animated picture that comes up, and they teach them all the different grammar concepts that they can access. They have flashcards and activities that they can use that focus on vocabulary, but they can access that in school and at home.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, it's fantastic. They have little videos. They have audio activities. I mean, I can keep going. How much time do we have?
That's, that's really good. So how many textbooks did, did you buy in the purchase?
Many. For Spanish, we, we have levels one, two, and three. We have, the bulk of our, that we bought was Level Two. Off the top of my head, anywhere between, I don't know, 200, 300? I'd have to look in that, but...
That's fine, just a ballpark for you.
And that's just for Spanish. And we also got to have, acquire books for French.
And they have the same thing with the technology, that they can use at home?
Exactly.
Fantastic.
Yep, all through levels one through three.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we have the superintendent's report to committee.
I think it's Dr. Walsh's opportunity to highlight all that's great at Algonquin.
Hopefully, we've had wonderful holidays. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you to A.D. Mosserino and World Language for being a part of our presentations for tonight. Some of the items are doubled up, so you'll see me skip over those so they don't continue the time. For academics, I wanted to speak about Stringo Rama. It is a phenomenal event that's run in Southborough. The event was last night, so although the information's slightly outdated, I do want to speak to it. It's where you have a showcasing of that vertical alignment and development of children through music. And it's specifically, this is orchestra, but we do it a lot with band as well. The performance is in Southborough with the orchestra program. And it's hard to grasp the concept and the work and the vertical teaming and collaboration that happens across schools, across the music departments, until you actually hear it, until you're sitting there and listening and watching the children go from third grade, fourth grade, sixth and eighth and so forth. And then they all come together at the finale. So my family and I went last night to experience it. It was standing room only, standing gym only, trotty or gym. It just speaks to the true testament of the community support. A lot of parents there, multiple schools there, kids showcasing what they learned. And as we all know about the learning process, music kind of crosses over between the right and left side of the brain. And so you can really use music to stimulate advancements in how students learn and how they relate to their academics. And to see that growth at such a young age and then just grow up to Algonquin is an exciting event. I know I'm going on and on about it. I wrote an email this morning to make sure that they all knew how much they appreciated what they did. It was the collaboration of not only the music teachers, the principals, the support, the parents. And again, it just speaks to how, how well our community comes out to support us. So thank you for that, I appreciate it. And if anybody recorded it, it is my son singing Twinkle Twinkle Little Star off key in the beginning. It's hard to make a three and a half-year-old understand, but so we're there. Nicole, Mr. Member alluded to this a little bit. We have multiple peer-to-peer tutoring going on in different content areas. You've heard me speak a little bit about it in the Algonquin Writing Center, where you match up a peer who has a strength in a certain area or skill, and they link up with a student who's looking for help. That is going on in science, that's going on in math, that's going on in world language, like I said, Algonquin Writing Center. That's powerful, when you can take a student who's struggling in some aspect of academics and allow them to get the support that they need in a comfortable setting, as well as a peer to practice application. So here's what I know grammatically. Here's how I can help you with your college essay. This is what I can do with your science lab report in, you know, advanced biology, AP Biology. And so when you start putting these peer-to-peer programs in place in multiple levels and in multiple content areas, you build the students' skill levels at different areas and start closing some achievement gaps that some of our students might be experiencing. So I wanted to reiterate, I know Mr. Member spoke to it, but it's going on in multiple content areas. And then if you can't find the help that you, that you're looking for, like I said, the college essay, you can pop down to the Algonquin Writing Center, and then they stop and do that. They are doing stop, drop, and midterm support, I believe it was today, and it filled up so fast that they had to open another session for Friday. So it really speaks to the support that we have going on in peer-to-peer tutoring and positive connections. It's one more positive connection that our students can make with each other to foster that Algonquin community. So I just wanted to speak to that. Under activities and clubs, we have been very busy per our norm. Almost a perfect score again out of our Math League, Algonquin's Math League team, 29 out of 30. Our DECA program has had multiple competitions. They hosted the Young Professionals Entrepreneurial Night. Eighteen business professionals came into Algonquin. They worked with our, our students, they answered a lot of questions. There's some great panel questions. Ms. Riley does phenomenal work with this. In addition to that, we've continued to grow our DECA Life Skills Program. They also went to a recent competition. Shout out to Ms. Allen, who I think is in the audience, and are the new administrator of student support, Ms. Cameron, both went, and they were judges. Students performed excellent. They continue to practice their, their skills through multiple projects that they've done. You heard me speak about the ornaments that they made. They cross collaborated against, with different departments. They had a marketing strategy, they had a sales strategy. They're going to continue that work. So we built DECA up, and now we're growing the DECA Life Skills. So really giving all children the same opportunities to apply the knowledge that they get in Algonquin outside of Algonquin's walls. I have to just come back to the Winter Ball. Major success, huge success again this year. We had quite a couple hundred, you know, like to pack them in there, at Mechanics Hall. And when you speak to our freshman class, it is just positive in that they had another opportunity to interact with peers outside of, you know, Algonquin School Day, foster those positive memories and really just enjoy it. So really glad that we brought back Winter Ball last year and that it continued again into this year. I know it seems like a dance, but it's a great opportunity for students to work on social skills. So not, not my taste in music, but anyway, you know, everybody was flossing, having a good time. Athletics, A.D. Mosserino, I, I can't top that report. To speak briefly of the T-Hawks of the month, they are there. We have our December T-Hawks. We have Lizzie, Ray, Karen, Gabriella. Just wanted to make sure that they got their, their recognition for their great work. And also, Coach Fedak does this wonderful work on developing leadership skills with, with her athletes. She brought five swim athletes with her to participate in the MIA, MIA High School Captain's Workshop. It really mirrors the work that you see Mike doing and Fran, you know, did last year on developing our student athletes to understand the impact that they have. You know, we mentioned, you know, modeling does really well, understanding that role as a peer leader, understanding the role you have as a student athlete in school. And to see Coach Fedak take what she does, you know, in the pool and bring it outside of that to her life skills just speaks to the true testament of the quality of coaches that we have. We have a coach here tonight. I think we have tennis coaches here, someone in the audience as well. Shout out to Coach Doyle. But, and, and, you know, A.D. Mosserino spoke about this as well. When you can have that coach here in the building fostering positive relationships and then helping children apply that skill set outside of the typical school day, it just shows how much we invest in our children, how successful that it makes us here at Algonquin. Under department updates, I'm going to skip down to Fine Arts. If, you know, anyone has time, our students have displayed some recent artwork under, on our C200 hallway. I know our gallery's preparing for their gallery opening. It's coming up soon, they're working on that. What's, what's exciting and why I mention it is that it gives children, one, to showcase something that they love, right, something that they're passionate about. But two, it gives a peer an opportunity to say, hey, good job, really like what you did. You know, give those positive accolades to one another, which helps foster a positive environment. On the bottom, I tried to squished and sniffed and stuck it in there, but I wanted to show how many of our graduates had come back and joined in, in our holiday concert to do the finale of White Christmas. Our graduates come back. You know, Mr. Greenwald was here, graduate of Algonquin, Spanish teacher. Speaks to, you know, just the traditions and the quality of academics that we offer here at Algonquin. On the next page, under Applied Arts, this is a great one to read. It's interesting to see how Applied Arts and Technology does a lot in the business field, a lot of, of career path work. They have to stay extremely relevant and up-to-date in their curriculum. And some of the really fun ideas that they're exploring at you and how to modify and update the curriculum, like application of social media and marketing, but with that responsibility of how you use social media and what you do with it and how lasting it is. So they're thinking about, you know, not only the marketing opportunities and the opportunities that they can create within the class and the curriculum, but also how to give them those real-life skills. You know, when you're in that interview and they Google your name, what's going to happen on your Facebook account? Ms. Muse, she's doing the same exact thing with childhood development, and some of the new researches have been happening. And Ms. Geigich is doing the same thing with our colony curriculum. So it's really exciting. They work in a professional learning community during the day when their community meets. They use their department meetings, and they use their own time after school to continue that collaborative work to advance our curriculum. Guidance, we have a very exciting community opportunity on January 31st at 7:00 p.m. Dr. Potte is coming here, she's going to talk about adolescent brain development and how that impacts the choices our children make, how it goes about impacting some of the risk-taking activities that they may participate in. Dr. Potte recently spoke, I believe at St. John's earlier this year, and the community was great in informing us of how well-received she was and asked if she could speak at Algonquin. And through the collaboration of Southborough Youth and Family, AP TO, Northborough, Southborough Substance Coalition, and Guidance, we're able to bring that to fruition this month. So please share the word, it goes out in the one call. It's going to be a great event. It's open to all community members, you do not have to be an Algonquin parent. I've already shared it with the... impacting some of the risk-taking activities that they may participate in. Dr. Potte recently spoke, I believe at St. John's earlier this year, and the community was great in informing us of how well received she was and asked if she could speak at Algonquin. And through the collaboration of Southborough Youth and Family, AP TO, Northborough-Southborough Substance Coalition, and Guidance, we're able to bring that to fruition this month. So please share the word. It goes out in the one call. It's going to be a great event. It's open to all community members. You do not have to be an Algonquin parent. I've already shared it with the middle school, so they can also get the information out. Posted up on multiple calendars and websites. Just if you get the chance to share it out because it was asked for, and we were able to bring it here, and it's exciting. In addition to that, we are hosting our Wednesday, January 30th. We do our juniors and their parents. College admissions panel will come in and answer all those questions as we do our college planning. That's in conjunction, a lot of work that we're doing with Guidance is aligning the conversations we have with our kiddos with the conversations we have with our parents. So you're going to see those junior workshops going on throughout these next couple of weeks, and then also that backup parent-student meeting so that they can have those questions happening at the same time. Going down to student support and ESL, this is not in there. This is news. This is breaking news. We were able to host Best Buddies is hosting this Sunday. It's a long weekend. There's plenty of times before the game, totally fitted in, at 1:00 and at 4:00. Best Buddies is hosting, marketing, supporting and running a dance performance here in which students are participating in it, either singers or dancers, and/or, you know, doing the concessions, doing the money collection and practicing skills application. Any threat of Mr. Winter, it will be moved to that Monday on the holiday. So we'll find a way to make it work. Again, just very exciting to see how community support came in together, gave our best buddies the opportunity, and they were able to market it and push it forward. On the last page, Poetry Out Loud is back. It's that time of year. It started. Competition is up and running. Kids are writing their poems, are getting ready. The final competition is Tuesday, February 5th. Mark your calendars. It's always fun. They do record it. Northborough K. Box has posted for us, so if you ever wanted to see it, to see the students and the passions they have for the work that they do. Great competition. Thank you to Ms. France, newer teacher, second year in the building, and Mr. Zarneki. You've heard that name before. He's our Algonquin Writing Center and Writing Across the Curriculum liaison. So that is shortened version because Mike stole some of my thunder, but he should have, so kudos to him. But hopefully, I've done a good wrap-up on some of the great work we've done. And in all of that, we had some multiple holidays and a vacation, and we still pulled it off. So Algonquin's busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the Stringarama. I'm glad you mentioned that. I was able to go to that years ago. My daughter was probably in fourth or fifth grade, and it was phenomenal. I mean, just to see the progression from one grade to the next. And the one that I went to, there was actually the kid from high school who was in the orchestra, and he was also a football player. And he got up and spoke about, you know, how it is possible to do both. And he was very well spoken, and the whole thing was just great. So I'm glad to see that's back, and I hope they keep it going.
So thank you. That was excellent. And so the, so Dr. Potte is coming on the 31st at 7:00 p.m. Is that going to be here at the school?
Not at all, correct.
Okay. And is that ever done, you know, as a school assembly? Do you ever have those kind of speakers come and speak to the students so you know that the students are getting the message as opposed to the ones whose parents may bring them that evening?
Yes, it is, but it's grade-specific. So we've had some speakers already this year where it's grade-specific, and then we'll offer the speaker again at night. With Dr. Potte, no, we have the one opportunity at night.
Okay. So you can have, you can find those opportunities to have them. I understand grade-specific, that's good, you know, but if there's, again, I encourage you to try to look for opportunities where the kids can hear it during the school day at an assembly and then, you know, I just have a fear that the kids that maybe, there's kids that who could benefit from this who aren't going to come January 31st at 7:00 p.m. And anyway, if you can look into that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
I was going to say the same thing. I think it's great to have it for parents. I don't think that parents can communicate to their kids as a speaker can communicate to the kids. Kids need to hear it firsthand. They're not going to necessarily listen to their parents. And the parents can say their kid's not doing it, and I can guarantee that they are doing something. Maybe not, but most are. Most are, you know, and it's just, I think it's very important in today's society and everything that's going on with the vaping and stuff, that this needs to be drilled into kids now, you know. So I would like to see more for parents, more for kids.
Same point. Like in years past, they used to, you know, before the prom, they'd throw some totaled car from a fire accident and just force everybody to have to walk by it. You know, they kind of talked about drinking and driving before, you know, before a prom or graduation week or something. The more you can expose them to it, you know, some of it's going to sink in. You pray some of it sinks in.
So I feel like in the past, there have been creative teachers that have actually done stuff like given extra credit if, and especially for the psychology, sociology, those kind of classes, if the student attends, you know, like whatever the session was. But this would probably be a really great, so to the extent that, I'm not an educator, so I don't know if this is something illegal, but if it's just an extra credit thing, I would think that, you know, teachers should probably do what they can to, you know, to influence the kids. That this would be a good message to hear.
And it's a good push for me to bring back, like for our health classes, like you said, psychology, biology.
Yep.
I like Kathleen's idea. I think even make it a homework assignment, just in attendance that you're there, you know what I mean? And it could lead to further discussion in the classroom even afterwards or with parents. I mean, no matter what we can save, if we can save one child, we can save five, we save 10, and it's worthwhile. So I agree with all the other previous members that have mentioned that, that it would be nice to have it during the day for the kids.
Yeah, I know in the past, we, they, they used to have a time, and I'm sure it has to do with the availability of the speaker. And because I know I've actually drive by and, you know, they'll have a program that was put on by, you know, some speaker a couple of times a year and that piggybacked it with the parents. So, you guys do a great job of trying to offer it during the day when you, when you speak a good word. So thank you for the update.
Well, I just have to say before we get to enrollments that there have been a lot of conversations on how to communicate to the folks at town meeting all of what takes place at high school and our schools. And I think I'm just going to take Sarah's principal reports and bind them along with the public hearing documents and all of the other budget documents that we distribute, because there's no better way to bring to life numbers than to see the pictures and read the words that are presented in the reports by Sarah and by the other principals in their weekly reports to the community. That that really brings the day-to-day life in a school alive, comes alive. And I'm going to be talking about numbers, which are less than exciting, but without those, I'm excited about the numbers. Yes, it's a matter of perspective, but I think those numbers really do support all of what has been presented this evening in the report and what takes place at school. And so they're a vital part of the process.
On that note, I actually think that it would be actually the idea to put this on a table at Southborough for town meeting.
I was serious, Kathy.
Yeah, they have all those things.
I mean, they have all the handouts. Why not?
Right.
Way to read while you're sitting there, listening to the same person.
So we have a binding machine with a snappy cover. Algonquin comes alive.
I think it'd be fantastic to show people exactly what goes on here, you know. I mean, you can put your FID report on it, too. Do something to, you know, talk about what goes on here.
And we have, you know, those kinds of reports on a regular basis from the principals that are sent home. And I don't think we've done that before, but it would be nice to put, you know, Algonquin, Northborough-Southborough Regional K.A.
Even for like parents whose kids are in middle school.
Right.
Right. To read about this, to see what goes on in the high school would be good, too.
And as our eighth graders are moving on to high school, what's more exciting than to see kids have, you know, students enjoying their time at school. So it gives them something to look forward to.
Maybe some of the metrics, maybe a page or two on metrics on some of the standardized testing or something wouldn't be a bad thing to, you know, or a list of all the colleges that, you know, we've received acceptances from, you know, last year or something. I mean, that's always impressive.
Just some positive feedback to help.
So we are doing the budget books again that we put out last year, and it did have, you know, that important information that people want to see, but pictures are worth a thousand words and, or 24 million, as that budget would be. And so putting those together might be just the thing to do. So I will be reaching out to the high school to make some sort of visual presentation and infusing that in our budget book that we already bind and put out for parents and might make an exciting read during town meeting.
And just one last comment. I'd like to thank Sarah for attending these events. I think in every monthly principal's report, you always mention about attending an event, but I know there's more that you attend, even with your family. And I know that even there are high school kids that probably still love seeing their principal being there and even making the connection to you and to your kids. So, and it's a worthwhile educational experience for your kids. But thank you for attending these events, which I think is very important to have your, your beautiful face and voice and support for the kids there. Thank you very much.
And now, the exciting, all of those students that represent all this good work. What you have in your packet is actually an outcropping of last night's budget subcommittee meeting. We do generally share the projected numbers a little later, but based on our conversations last night about enrollments, they're included in an updated enrollment, which was distributed in your packet. So you will see the current enrollments for 2018, 19, what we, what our numbers were as of October 1, with little fluctuation actually since October 1, which is what the state bases most of its data points on, and then the projected enrollments for 1920. Being mindful that that footnote is important, that number represents 100% of our current eighth graders moving on. Historically, it is close to that, but that is our best hope, that everyone who's currently in our system moves on to the high school. So that's what we're looking at right now with projected 100% of our eighth graders moving on. So that information is very helpful as we consider our budget for next year. If the committee has any questions on that. We have about four versions of enrollments that we distributed, I think, early on this year. One using census numbers, another using NASDAQ, and some projected amount of enrollment from Southborough and Northborough based on a five-year average. And the five-year average is somewhere about around 87% from Southborough and about 95% from Northborough, but it fluctuates from year to year. Also in your packet this evening is the general fund expenditure report. We request a vote to approve until audited this evening. Again, attached to the monthly general, general report is also the status of our athletic revolving account for review. Again, Mike did an excellent job presenting this evening. Thank you. And is also doing a very excellent job, being mindful of his expenditures and reviewing that process. So thank you.
So I move that we vote to approve until audited the monthly general fund expenditure report as of December 31st and the revenue report as of December 31st.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan.
I have a question if I could on the, on the revenue report. December 31st, it shows that we've got 56% of the $350,000 estimated athletic receipts in place. And kind of thinking after December 31st, the number of, the number of games that we have that are revenue generating, ticket selling, kind of drops off a bit. I mean, we're just down to basketball, right? And we're already, by December 31st, we're already through some of the basketball season, I think. Are we going to hit that number? Are we going to hit that $350,000? Is that you that I asked? Mike?
Well, we are, in regards to our expenditures for this year, we are above where we're at for our ticket prices for basketball. And we've only had one hockey game so far. So we're, we're above that. And with, and also with the amount of participants that we have above from last year with our, with our fees, we are, we are on target for that.
Okay, terrific.
And anecdotally, we're about the same percentage.
As we were last year.
As we were last year at this time.
All right. Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
It's unanimous. The priorities in the calendar, we're going to be revisiting. Just as a side note, we do not have any particular dates set yet by financial advisory or in Southborough or Northborough appropriations for the presentations, but we do know that Southborough's town meeting is sooner than later this year. So we'll be looking at March 23rd and for that town meeting on a Saturday, April 22nd. I'm anticipating receiving a phone call from either John Cudere or Mark Purple shortly to, very soon, to indicate what those dates might be for our meetings. And certainly we'll let the committee know when that happens. Capital plan is also in your packet. Vote to approve. We did not approve it when it was presented, I believe, in November. I think it was the November meeting. I will make a notation that Mike, since Mike is here, at our meeting last month, we did discuss the fact that there was a, a group of very active, positive community members that wanted to work with us to explore creating an RFP and funding that process to examine the feasibility of a multi-sport complex upgrade. And that whole center part of this capital plan is really dependent on some of that work. There are a number of proposed upgrades to various pieces of our athletic complex. And it is certainly our hope that we can move on this and activate those community members and members of the Booster Organization who are very enthusiastic about working with us to launch an RFP so that we can have some design work completed to take a look at what that would look like in terms of cost, but also in the overall layout and design of all these upgrades. If that were to take place, and I see at this point, based on conversations, why it wouldn't, that entire middle section of the capital plan would be part of that discussion. And that represents a big portion of this. And then the next phase would be proposed funding avenues for supporting that work.
Still, you want a motion?
Yep.
So I move that we approve the Algonquin proposed capital budget for FY 2019 through FY 2024, as provided.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan. Any discussion?
So just, you know, for clarification for everyone, I mean, if we okay this, that doesn't necessarily mean that in FY 21, we're now obligated to spend that money. We won't be signing contracts to, you know.
I would like to thank Mike Gorman, who works and spends much time analyzing these numbers to put these to paper and does, as we know, a phenomenal job keeping this facility as if it were brand new. So we appreciate all the work that Mike puts into caring for this complex, as well as our maintenance and custodial crews.
But actually, I wanted to add something to that. Someone had mentioned to me who had their kids went to another area high school, middle school, and they were so impressed with how clean the school was and kept and maintained. And they're like, you know, she was just flabbergasted, you know, what she was used to. And it was a well-to-do community, regional district. So they do a great job.
I'd also think it speaks to the, the culture and the climate and just our overall attitude of our students, being appreciative of the experience that they have here each and every day, and wanting to keep their school in great shape, and our teachers as well, and administrators.
Okay, so all those in favor? That passes. You need to miss slate. So now we have the summary.
We do. And before I approach the podium, I do want to draw your attention to a couple documents that were distributed. We have met as a budget subcommittee twice. The preliminary budget that you see is sort of the second preliminary discussion that we've had. And we met as early, as late as last evening, actually, and went through the entire budget, basically fund code by fund code. What you also have in your packet, this is a fairly lengthy line item budget that you have as part of the preliminary conversation. And with each fund code, which is a classification or a category, there are many subcategories within each code. What you have is a synopsis of the status of each of the fund codes with the description from 19 to 20 and what the dollar difference is represented in this budget. So it's a little bit of a snapshot version of the entire line item budget. And with that, I'd like to share a PowerPoint.
This is on. Before I begin, I would like to just.
Give a number of thank yous to the folks who participated in the process of building any budget, whether it's the North or South or Regional School District budget or any budget of such magnitude. And that really is Central Office, the building base team here at Algonquin Regional, led by Principal Walsh, and all those who input at every level to represent their needs and to share their needs as we think about starting our next school year, FY 2020. The process begins really as soon as we start expending the budget in July 1. So the team at Central Office has worked together to sort of fine-tune each and every line item in this budget. And what we heard tonight is well-represented in many of our conversations. It's so exciting to think that the budget that we present each and every year supports the good work that, you know, World Language presented this evening. But each and every time one of our departments are invited to present, we learn a little bit more about the school and we learn more and more from an actual application point perspective, how this budget is realized each and every day at the high school. There have been in a number of conversations with our two-member towns to identify the current fiscal realities that they deal with each and every day. As a regional district, we have a unique funding opportunity to join, not only fiscally, but with our student populations in our communities to create such an outstanding educational experience for our students. The budget that is presented this evening, again, is based very much on our statement of vision and mission, as well as the budget priorities that are created at the onset of each fiscal year. I think this year, they were voted in October. So this is where we begin. It is our foundation, is at the core of all of our conversations, and it is very much a part of all of the documents that are communicated throughout the year in various formats. The budget process, as I mentioned, begins with a review here at school committee and a revision of any budget priorities that were established last year and will help guide our work next year. Throughout the months leading up to this evening, there have been many meetings and many conversations that have taken place. And part of those conversations center around the priorities that were voted by the school committee in the early fall. I think it is clear that as we begin our conversations with any budget, we review these budget priorities and ask ourselves, as we're moving through this process, are we being true to the priorities that were established? A good example of the first bullet, or the first priority, was to maintain high-quality staff, outstanding presentation from World Language, and also to ensure that they, in their work, and our students in their learning, have the instructional programming and resources available and accessible to them. Nicole mentioned several times new textbooks. All of our textbooks have online options as a priority when purchasing them. But that was realized because five years ago, the school committee was in full support of funding, even through challenging times, a five-year plan of resource allocation. It had been some time since we were investing in textbooks and we were a little bit behind. We knew that we could not purchase all of those materials in any given year. So with great conversations here by the, with the high school administration and the departments, they sort of, I referred to it as the deli line serving next number, but that's really what it was. And through great conversations, they decided which department would go next. And because of that, and because we adhered to that through the process, the students realized new resources and the content comes alive. We have re-authored that document, and Sarah, with her departments, has created the next five years based on that successful endeavor. So it was requested that, you know, the department chairs come back together, look at where they are now, look backwards in terms of what we were able to provide to them, and then do some forward thinking. So that document is available to us, and we use that to take a look at our needs this year, as we planned for next year in the budget. So that's reflected in the budget. Always strive to achieve class sizes according to our policy. And earlier this year, when Sarah presented her school improvement plan, the discussion around class sizes was a key discussion. And so that's something that we're very mindful of as we move forward with the process. Prepare all students for high levels of success in college and career readiness. Part of the instruction, the infrastructure upgrades that support our Bring Your Own Device, which is the fourth, fifth bullet down, yes, also helps us prepare our students for the online version of MCAS, which for the high school is its first year of launch. We've been online at the K8 level, but this is, in fact, the final frontier for that MCAS rollout, and we are well-prepared for that, as well as all the work that the guidance department and all of the teachers do in their classrooms to bring career pathways alive, again, represented in Sarah's presentation this evening. So when we talk about maintaining a budget, all of these considerations are in play. We want to maintain the experiences that the students have now, and in all possible cases, not look at reducing in any line item, but certainly being mindful of the priorities in place. Sarah presented her school improvement plan, and this budget, I think, does continue to support some of the items that she had in her action plan. Sarah can speak to this, Dr. Walsh can speak to this more directly, but just to do some, give some overarching examples, I think she shared a little bit about the speakers that are present, whether they're here for the evening, for our parents and students, or throughout the day for our students. One of the increases, which was offset, but it's still in the budget, was some additional funding for those speakers and not always relying on external funding through APTOs and so forth, because they are essential in the overall social, emotional well-being and health of our students. And having guest speakers does support that. Also, there were some discussions around continuing your great work with the department chairs around professional learning communities, as well as continuing to look at our instructional practices through instructional rounds. This budget, while may not be associated specifically with a high school or building baseline item, does continue to provide some curriculum R&amp;D funds that allow us to support those launches on a district-wide basis. Julie Doyle is here, Director of Instructional Technology Learning, Literacy Learning, close, right Julie? And she can speak a little bit about that blended learning, blended one-to-one learning environment that we launched this year as a pilot, but that also supports the Canvas Learning Management System that we've talked about quite frequently throughout the year. So Julie, I'm actually going to share the mic with you in this presentation, if you want to say a few words. Yeah, come on up. Julie Doyle, come on down.
[laughing]
You're the next presenter on FY 2020 budget.
Hello. So as Christine mentioned, I just want to talk a little bit about the technology budget and what it is that we have in store with the money that we've decided to include in that budget. So according to the district technology implementation plan, we have always had as a goal to provide access, to provide student access to technology to support 21st century Over the last couple of years, a lot of the budget money has been devoted to buying some devices, but also to fund some major infrastructure, network infrastructure projects. And we feel like that was really necessary to lay the groundwork, to move the high school away from shared carts, to this most recent year of our BYOD, or Bring Your Own Device initiative, and now moving forward to what we are referring to as our Blended One-to-One initiative. So there was a document that was shared with you, and as you can see from that document, the upgrade to the infrastructure was completed in September. Then, at the beginning of term two, which was early November, we encouraged students to bring in their own device. We recommended devices that we thought that they should bring in. We'd also noticed over the last couple of years that there was sort of this unofficial Bring Your Own Device happening with, you know, somewhere around, you know, 30 to 50% of our students. Also this year, what we had in place, if families decided not to send a device in with their student, we had devices available in the library, Chromebooks specifically, that the students could loan out on a daily basis. As Christine also mentioned, with the implementation of Canvas in year two, the combination of Bring Your Own Device and our learning management system has really made technology integration more seamless, as well as provided for more personalized and blended learning opportunities. So what we noticed this year was students are bringing in their devices, and only about 7%, of the student population were borrowing devices on a daily basis. So we've met and sort of reevaluated the program, and what we've included in the FY 20 budget is the decision to purchase 120 more Chromebooks. And all the numbers are sort of outlined for you on that document, but what this will do will be to increase our current inventory and really put us in a good place to make sure there's equity in providing all students who need a device, a device. Because we feel like that 7% might not be representative of all the students who need a device, because we think it maybe makes sense to be able to give the devices to students to borrow for the whole year, instead of having to loan on a daily basis. And our plan moving forward is to continue to reevaluate and to develop the budget that would include funding to buy more Chromebooks based on need, usage, and the age of the Chromebooks in our current inventory.
Well, okay Julie, thank you. Thank you. It's also, I think, important to note that when we say we're going to purchase 30 additional Chromebooks, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're adding to the technology line items. And I think that's an important point to emphasize, that in reality, what we're doing is reallocating what we expended those funds on last year. I remember when we were putting the budget together last year, we noted that this was sort of the one last chance we had to capitalize on a lot of E-rate funding that was coming our way. And so we chose to increase that line item so that we could maximize the E-rate reimbursement or the offset. And we did that. And so even though we're purchasing 30 more Chromebooks in this operational budget, it's not 30 more, 120 more Chromebooks or $30,000 increase. We are reallocating those funding resources that are contained in the budget. And that is often our discussion, when we suggest that we need more of, it doesn't necessarily mean we're adding to the budget. It means we're redistributing the funds that are already contained in the budget. And also, the last one we just reviewed, our long and short-term capital plan. That capital plan is our best-case design at what we would like to see accomplished, as Mr. Budkamp pointed out, but we're not always able to realize everything on that capital plan. The impacts this year, again, it's, many people refer to it as a level service budget. I refer to it as maintaining what we have, and in certain areas, having some incremental growth in areas that we focus on. This year, we do note that we have an increase in budgeted expenditures to meet an increase in student needs. That's a targeted area of incremental growth. We are completing next year, our third year of our collective bargaining agreement. And as we know, we are a human resource-rich industry, and therefore, every year, the largest percentage of our budget is allocated to staffing and related costs. And this year, again, next year will be the last year of our current collective bargaining agreement. Julie mentioned that we had invested in the technology infrastructure, allowing us then to have successful pilots like Canvas and the Blended One-to-One Learning Initiative or Learning Environment. And so the purchase of those devices does represent an incremental growth, because we're purchasing another 120 Chromebooks, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's an increase to the budget. It's really a redistribution of budgeted funds. We are, as I mentioned earlier, maintaining our learning resource allocation, five-year plan, and that has been reauthorized. This budget does reflect fulfillment of the fifth year, hard to believe it's been five, but it has, which necessarily doesn't mean that we've increased those line items. It means what we've done has increased in the areas of need, and that's reflected in this budget as well. And we are completing our fifth year of our transportation contract next year. And so there's a slight increase per the contract in the budget. I think it's about $17,000 because of the fifth year of the contract. We do have some offsets, it's not always add. We do have some offsets to the budget last year because of the good work of school committees from across the Commonwealth and MASC and MASSS being relentlessly in pursuit of additional funding for Circuit Breaker with the governor and the state. We were able to realize a growth from somewhere between 65%, 68% to 72%. That's reflected in our offset, our reimbursement rate in Circuit Breaker. Again, we are very fortunate as a district. Unlike many districts, we bank what we receive in this year and budget to expend next year. So the monies we're receiving this year from Circuit Breaker are actually based on FY 18 students. So we know that we will have $512,112 to offset the $1,366,495 cost for out-of-district placements. I do have to suggest that while that number seems high, it is very much offset by the great programming that takes place in our high school. And what isn't always visible in a budget like this, when you're looking at what's expended, is what you save by the programs that we invest in each and every day and the work that our teachers do and our staff to keep our students in our district. So I think that's always worth noting. So in this operational budget, FY 20, we are budgeting the difference between the two, and that is an increase in the student out-of-district line item. We also, yay, had an increase in regional transportation, which coincidentally, we were on a 71-72 at the state level last year, is resulting in a $717,792 offset to the increase. That number's coupled with Chapter 70 to reduce the amount of assessments to our towns. Last year, a lot of great work with our Teachers Association and working with our towns to once again address the ever-increasing, rising costs related to healthcare. As a regional district, we contain those costs within our budget. Last year, with lots of discussion, we consolidated to one carrier. There is an increase in the budget. That has more to do with subscribership than overall cost on the healthcare plan. This is the first year we're seeing just about a 0% increase for active employers, employees, and about a 2% to 3% increase for retirees. So the numbers in the budget reflect subscribership, but it also reflects a minimal cost increase because of the actual cost of the plan. If we can remember, year after year, one of the things that we always talked about at the preliminary budget stage was, we don't know what healthcare is going to be. In some years, we talked about a 10% to a 12% increase. Last year, I think the increase came in around 4% or 5%. So to be here saying 0% again, kudos to the associations for being willing and open to these kinds of conversations. We are continuing to, with our class size projections, align our FTEs, which is Full-Time Teacher equivalency, with our class size analysis. That conversation will continue all the way through a request to vote on the recommended budget, which will be February 27th. And then Mike referred to the revenues as offsets for our athletic, to support our athletic program. The cost of our athletic program is $889,426. $536,950 is represented in the operational budget, and that is offset by an anticipated revenue gate receipts fees of $352,476. So those are some offsets that actually help move our budget forward. The preliminary regional budget proposed at this point, with a very, very strong emphasis on preliminary, unlike perhaps a K-eight budget, we are most affected by what the state decides to do. And the state has not issued the governor's budget. We also know that the issuance of the budget in January really doesn't mean all that much because we, in August, are always voting new assessments because the budget just gets approved in July. So it goes through its process at the State House. At this point, this is our preliminary proposal. I anticipate between now and February twenty-seventh, when we're back looking at, voting a recommended budget, that that number will be adjusted. It won't adjust up, but it will most likely be adjusted. So we're looking at this year's budget, twenty-three million, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. A preliminary increase, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four, for a very preliminary budget proposal of twenty-four million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars, an incremental increase of four point one-three. How does that break down to us, to our members? The regional budget calculation is as follows. We look at our preliminary budget amount, and we subtract from that what we know we're going to be receiving from the state. While there's been a lot of conversation about an increase in Chapter Seventy, it hasn't been realized at this point. So based on what we received last year, three million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars, there's the regional transportation reimbursement, which helps bring that total down as we move towards the assessment. We have miscellaneous income of about twenty thousand dollars each year because of all the member accounts that we have. Christine Teg does an amazing job at investing our accounts. And that totals three million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and six dollars, which means that after our offsets, moving forward to, again, calculating assessments to our town, we're looking at a remaining balance of twenty million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. I will say that this year, working with our two towns, Mark Purple, Brian Ballantyne, John Kader, and Kim Fosterhood, we have spent an enormous amount of time trying to figure out what the MLC numbers might be in advance of the governor's budget. Historically, when we've talked preliminary budget, we've used the prior year's MLC numbers. This year, working with Jim and Greg and the two towns with the Mars Association and the state, we have dug very deeply into the MLC calculations. Still can't explain it. Still very confusing. But we've put a lot of time into trying to figure out if we can get closer to an estimate of those governor's numbers. When those numbers are shared, it can be a significant impact to our towns because those numbers affect how much the state is telling each town they can afford to pay at a minimum. So these are adjusted numbers. We're very much looking forward to the governor's release because if we get close to these, we may actually have developed a formula working with all of these folks at the state level and local level to help calculate this, these numbers, which is a big help to the towns. After those minimum local contribution amounts, which we actually have nothing to do with, we do not set them, we just inherit them, the remaining budget to be allocated based on October one enrollments, six million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Because we are a regional district, the towns are assessed by regional agreement based on the October one numbers. We just took a look at them again tonight. There was a slight shift this year percentage-wise. Northborough's portion of those numbers is sixty-one point seven seven percent. Southborough's portion, based on enrollment, is thirty-eight point two-three percent. Once we apportion that six million-plus dollars accordingly and add the minimum local contribution, we see what it is that each town will be asked to support in terms of dollars. And from that, we look at, what is the increase in percentage and aggregate dollars over last year? So at this point, the assessment is seven point two-six for Northborough or eight hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. No debt included in that, just budget and operational budget. And Southborough's portion is an increase of four hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars or five point four-three percent. Just some historical percentages. We can see, this is the enrollment percentages and the shifting from year to year. From the prior slide, we see how that could potentially impact the assessments to our towns. Moving forward again, historical reflection, fourteen forty-nine. Note, there's an asterisk next to that. When we prepare the budget, we look at our October one enrollments, and that's what we use for the calculations of enrollment. However, we know that we've just taken a look at what our projections are for next year. If those numbers come to fruition, they will be used next year to calculate FY twenty-one's budget. Some interesting disaggregation of dollars. And why it's showing up category with names on them is perhaps because I moved the file over from Google. Google. It's an interesting, you do all kinds of things. So what you'd be looking at here is the largest part of that pie, which is contractual obligations. And that's a disaggregation of our total dollars of twenty-four million, thirty-five thousand. I'm gonna, because it doesn't even have it on my screen. You, I think you have the handout, which actually has the printouts of the categories. But that's a snapshot of a visual representation of the twenty-four million by fund code. And the percentage by categories are on the bottom. Let's hope these, these did translate. So if we look at FY percent allocation of the total budget increase, regular ed and special ed, this was an interesting slide as well. If we're looking at the total allocation just by fund codes, which isn't one particular line item, but in aggregate of all of the special ed budget and all of the regular ed budget, thirty-eight percent is an overall increase of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five five three for the regular ed or one point five percent of the overall budget increase and two point five six for student support services and special education, again reflecting the disaggregation of the nine fifty-two, one nine four. And one more slide. We have the Dan Kalenda enrollment model. We have the Paul Budka chart model. And that is, what can we really affect in terms of discretionary funding? So if we look at this budget, contractual obligations, which is about thirty-five percent, contractual obligations. Unless we have reductions in force or decide not to support the third year of the contract, those numbers are basically fixed. As well as the insurance, again, I noted that it was a three percent on retirees and a zero percent. That insurance really does speak to the actual subscriber rate of our employees. Out-of-district tuitions, we, there is no discretion. Special ed, Director of Student Support Services is here this evening. Marie Allen and her team does an amazing job to keep our students in district. But sometimes, it is, it is necessary for students to have an experience outside of our district. And below, you'll see the other categories. We did say that this building is very, very well-maintained, and we very rarely increase our maintenance accounts. Try to work with them and use facilities rentals whenever possible. We have transportation, regular ed. I mentioned there was a seventeen thousand dollar increase. That is contractual. We have to pay our utilities. Although it is getting a little chilly in here right now, but I know we have the insurance. Because we are a district, a regional district, we have things like Medicaid and liability insurance that we maintain, where the town usually maintains that on our K-eights. Transportation for special ed, again, if students are moving about within and without, outside of the district, we have to provide transportation, district costs, or things like fiscal audits that we need to have completed. And technology, we mentioned a little bit about that. However, what's interesting about the technology accounts is there's very, very little increase despite the fact that we just mentioned that we were going to purchase Chromebooks. What you can't see in between that blue and that other little orange slice is this tiny little strip that represents about a one percent of the, the total numbers reflected in this increase. So pulling out a piece of the pie that we actually might consider discretionary funds is our teaching and learning purchases in the budget, which total about six percent. Thank you. And that is the preliminary budget. We actually do not have to take a vote on this budget this evening. I generally vote the preliminary. I certainly can answer questions. Joining this evening, I would be amiss, they came out for the night, is Jim Jock, our appointed interim business manager, Marie Allen. Rebecca Pellegrino is in the back row. We see you. HR Director Julie was at the mic and Rhoda Webb, our English language educator, education coordinator. Thank you.
So, you know, I think we've done a terrific job of keeping this as low as we can keep it, while level-setting, you know, the services that we've been providing, you know, for, for these years. I mean, we've got a great complex here. We are proud of what we do. We don't want to cut back on those services in any way. And, and as we kind of saw in this last slide, I mean, you know, the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase is almost, what, ninety-four percent of it is almost unavoidable costs. Contractual requirements, you know, adhering to legal requirements relative to, you know, support services for students. How the, you know, and then how the money gets allocated to the towns is, you know, that minimum local contribution math is, is, is interesting, but, and it's kind of out of our control. But, you know, I think, you know, frankly, I think we've done everything we can. I think it is terrific that we've been able to incorporate the, what do we call it? The blended one, one-for-one, you know, Chromebook program and stuff, and to get that funded this year, I think it was a terrific addition to this budget without, without breaking the bank. And, you know, the, the idea of being able to loan, to loan one to a student who needs one instead of every day, you know, to just, to be provisioned in a way that we can just say, okay, you know, if you need it, you know, here it is. And, oh yeah, by the way, we'll have some others for the kids who forget their, their laptop for some reason, you know, walking in the door on any particular morning. I think, I think Julie and her team have put together a terrific plan here. You know, so even as we're trying to just level-set, you know, we're still finding creative ways to keep improving things. You know, and I, I think we did it with about as minimal an increase as could be done this year. And I think Christine and Dr. Walsh and the staff are all to be commended here. I, I can't see any way to do it any better and, and still deliver like we've been delivering.
I'll second Mr. Budka's comments. I, I do like the motto, educationally sound and fiscally responsible. Ms. Johnson, I agree that that's what this budget represents. And I also think the one-to-one is a, is a, is a good idea. I know there was a lot of, you know, the bring your own device, and I don't like the acronym, so I don't use it for what it also can, bring your own beverage. So I've never liked that. Never liked that for a school environment. But I applaud the efforts to try to be able to allocate some of those devices to students who need them. I know there were, I have heard from many parents who didn't like it from the get-go because they didn't want their kids coming with devices that were just going to take their attention away from school and they're going to use them for social media purposes. And so now that, now that they have to have one, I think, you know, the Chromebook idea is probably better than, you know, a smaller device that a student is just going to be using for social media time and time again in school. So kudos on the, on the blended one-to-one. I think that's a, a good idea. And again, well done, Ms. Johnson. Educationally sound and fiscally responsible. You, you once again, you know, did a great job on behalf of our district. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so next, next month will be recommended.
B-Day. B-Day. Or B-Day.
And, Budget Day, yeah, yeah. So the March meeting, is that, that's before Southborough Town日?
I think so. The third Wednesday, so March twenty-third would be the Saturday of the week we have our combined.
Okay, yeah.
I think too that, you know, in light of a lot of the conversations that are taking place in both the communities, there was sort of about two years where we would have budget presentations and actually, we had great conversations with the custodians in the school that night. And so I think, I feel very strongly that this year in particular, prior to the Southborough meeting in March and the April meeting in, in April, the Northborough meeting, we will be putting opportunities out there for groups, particularly our seniors, to meet with us and just to have budget meetings in both of the communities because of the conversations that might be taking place or the confusion around some of the initiatives, like the blended one-to-one. We upgraded the bring to blended one-to-one for that project and really just to take the time to address any questions that we, that folks might have. We'll be sharing those dates soon.
Okay, so, moving on, we have no old business. We have no policy development or distribution. Audience sharing. I do have something. We, I did hear from Jeanetta Choi, our member. She sent me a letter. And it is, it is with deep regret that I must inform you that I am resigning my position on the Regional School Committee effective January first, twenty nineteen. Sadly, due to personal reasons, I am unable to attend meetings, which makes it impossible to perform my duties as a committee member. It has been an honor to serve with such passionate, kind, and helpful people. I have learned so much and thank you and everyone involved with the committee for this wonderful experience. Sincerely, Jeanetta Choi. So we will be posting a, in for the, for the town of Northborough, seeking, seeking, like we did before, residents to put forth interest. It will be, the timeline would be post on January eighteenth.
Friday.
Friday.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be due by February fifteenth. And we'd interview at our next meeting on February twenty-seventh, as we did before. And so that'll, that'll go out. And the appointment is until the annual election in May of twenty nineteen. So just for the remainder of the year. And it's somewhat a good taste of the committee and it's new people. So anyways, I want to say, I mean, I enjoyed serving with Jeanetta when she always had some good, good comments. When she, she didn't, she didn't speak often, but when she did, she was, always was on point, I thought, and brought a fresh perspective to the committee that, that I didn't always think of when she would bring up a point or a question. So I wish her the best and hope for the future. Any other audience sharing? Any other audience sharing?
I'd just like to also thank Jeanetta for her service and being a Northborough member on the Regional School Committee. I remember her enthusiasm when she first got on board and having little children and it's, we all know how hard it is, even with teenage children, to juggle everything that we have to do. So, but I'd like to thank her for enthusiasm and maybe in the future we'll see her again running on a position for K-8 or even the region again. So congra, thank her for her service.
All right, so we have personnel distribution and the Worcester County Superintendent's Association, call, college lunchtime with the...
I just wanted, if I might comment, Jessica Lee and Andrew Zhao were our recipients this year. This is an annual event. Dr. Walsh and I get to attend this event this year. It was at Holy Cross on the hill. We traveled to Holy Cross. And it's just amazing to sort of hear the resumes and the bios of the students and so many wonderful community service and career pathways represented from our scholars, our recognized scholars. And it's something that the Superintendent's Association in Worcester County has been sponsoring for many, many years and it continues to be the highlight of the year. So it was a great day well spent or morning. Lunch, I think it was lunch, actually. And it's also nice to be there with our colleagues. We don't oftentimes have a chance to gather, so it's a, it's a great time to recognize our students. And their pictures are in color in the brochure and the packet.
I always, always get this every year and it's, it's quite an opportunity and a good opportunity to meet other students at other high schools as well that are equally as accomplished. And so next we have approval of bills and payrolls, so we'll have those.
Not tonight. They were all signed last night, I think. Yeah. The advantage of having a subcommittee before the committee.
That's good.
Less to carry, right, Jim?
Yeah.
Yep, and we also received the notice of, for all municipal employees for the Ethics and Compulsive Interest Law, so to go through that.
I bring in a special request from Cheryl Letty, who's the keeper of the Ethics paperwork, to please remember to return the signed document. And the test is every two years. It's, the link is on our website because it's the same one our employees take each year. So if you haven't taken it in two years, it is something that's required. But if you could send along the signed document that's in the back of the packet, the handout that's in the packet, and when you finish the test successfully, it's hard not to because you can keep trying until you get the answer right, just print out the certificate and she puts those on file.
So this thing is only acknowledging, receiving.
You've acknowledged.
All right. Sign it right here. Okay, so that's great. And so agenda items for next month, we have the Applied Arts Department presentation. Is there any other agenda items other than the budget final? Any other things that, well?
I just have to comment because I've been looking at these watercolors and they're incredible. And Dr. Walsh mentioned the art show coming up and every year that just absolutely blows me away. Well, I, I'm not artistic, so I can really appreciate it. But I just wanted to point them out as a teaser to the art show that anybody who can absolutely should go. It's just an amazing, amazing. And I hope they bring a subset of, you know, that work to their, to their presentation.
Yeah, that would be great.
And I'm sure there'll be other items between now and then to add.
Yes, I'm sure there'll be more than two items.
More than two items.
All right. So motion?
I'm moving to adjourn this now for our Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of January 16th.
And second.
Move by call, second by Dan, all those in favor. All right, adjourn.